Hey Jacob, will you call the road please?
Butler?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Lipscomb?
Here.
Oakridge?
Here.
Smith? Thrash? Vincenza?
Here.
Five members present, two absent.
We were contacted ahead of time knowing that the two councilmen would not be here this evening. Okay, the first item on the agenda is the minutes. Everyone received their copy of the minutes from the April 3 meeting? Does anyone have any questions about those minutes? Okay, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to accept the April 3 minutes. Second?
I'll second.
Take a little call vote please.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Here.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Oakridge?
Yes.
Vincenza?
Yes.
Four in favor, one extension.
Okay, the minutes from the April 3 meeting have been approved. We have nothing that I'm aware of under citizens' hearing or correspondence. Has anyone received any correspondence that I'm not aware of?
I mean, not written, but there are a couple of issues that have brought my attention out of this, new business, old business, or bring them up now.
Well, yeah, it should be under new business so that we can, ahead of time, put it on the agenda. What do you have?
Well, just two residents have approached me or contacted me, one about the e-fall lift station and perhaps, well, not perhaps according to them, but sewage going into the creek. So, I wanted to address that and see what's going on there.
We can do that, Jeremy, because I think they're aware of what's going on there.
It's fixed.
Okay, and then the second one is someone had a question about the Rita tax. So, do you want me to bring it up now? You want me to bring it up? I mean...
Yeah, you can bring it up. Go ahead and bring it up.
Yeah, our job, like, I think when people approach us is right, is to try to answer a question and when I don't know. So, Rita taxes, they're taxing something new this year? Do we have any idea?
Not that I know of.
So, if some, if a resident in St. Clairsville has a question about a Rita tax issue, who is...
You have to call Rita or contact Rita.
There's nobody in the city that can...
We don't, we do not administer the Rita tax, the income tax. So, Mike actually, he's, actually represents us for residents in Rita sometimes, so, I mean, I could contact Rita, but I'm not sure. It could be a different kind of income or something that they didn't have last year. I don't really know because I don't, so the income tax rules, they're very...
So, who would I, would I have our resident contact you or would I have them?
Rita. Or if they didn't want to, if they wanted to go through Mike, they can.
Mike Smith.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And I'm gonna get the same answer that they're gonna get from Rita, but it could be because they have a different type of income or something, but the city's not, not changed their tax policy.
So, there's nothing new that the city has done that says something's taxable this year that was not taxable last year?
Not, not, not that the city decides any of that. We only charge, you know, what, the income tax, but there could have been some laws that have changed, but I'm not aware of that.
Those are my two resident concerns.
Okay, does anybody else have any correspondence or any other residents' concerns they want to bring up? Okay, hearing nothing, we'll move on to the reports. Mary isn't here this evening, so we'll move on to Service Director Jeremy Greenwood.
Good evening, Council. As always, there's always a lot going on. Had eight different meetings since the last meeting here, completed projects, we're still working on water nodes and meters, the gas aggregation off-out letters went out, there were several calls, but they were directed to Treebell Energy, yeah, to answer those Water and sewer rate study, we're reviewing the findings, going through, the last four years, the rates were increased to $1 per thousand, which ended up being about eight, plus or minus eight percent each year. Pre-construction for the water distribution project, that was completed, the utility locates are done, we've had door hangers out and we're notifying citizens. E-fall lift station was rebuilt, the pumps, the high-service pump was submerged underwater. I do believe it was because of a failure of the sump pump, which meant that it flooded out the motors and shorted them out, so that's been completely rebuilt. At the time, we had another pump station brought in, it was going through, but it looks like it was just basically maintaining and at high flows, was getting a little bit of overflow into the stream, which has been cleaned up and mitigated now, approved of what the EPA requested. Space View Lift Station, that was also another rebuild, I've got pictures of that. Our second screw pump, the wastewater plant, is now operational. We have three screw pumps, just so everyone knows, we had two of them down because of the bearings went out of them. Circle fence is in to look at, redoing some fence in a couple of areas. Upcoming projects, spring cleanup started today, we're picking up naturally frolicking brush, same thing, Ward 1 today, Ward 2 tomorrow, all the way down the line, and then Friday's kind of an extra pickup day, so if anybody has anything that they think has been missed, please call the city building and we'll work on that. We're also gonna be flushing hydrants next week, still looking at paving options, what's coming up and what can be done with the water projects that are coming in. Working with the engineer on the sinkhole, also on the bypass road, still doing the water node installation as they come up, construction on the I-70 project, the liner has been ordered. Right now, it's tentatively being set for installation on May 22. Hopefully, it comes in on time with that, that's been the delay, is waiting on that. Working with the engineer on the Route 40 waterline extension, still looking at potential funding sources in there, got another lead today, I'm gonna work with that on a potential grant, working with the engineer. Water distribution, as we noted, started on the east side, they are looking to do their first connection maybe on Thursday, the 20th. Working on building projects, the train station, the rec building, the junior rec building, the police locker room, the lobby for the police, the K-9 station, just whenever we can basically fit them in. Working on administrative policies and procedures, updating details for street sidewalks as we go through, working on the inflow and infiltration control plan. Water tanks have all been inspected now, I'm waiting on the report for the 1929 tank. Once I have that, we're gonna make a determination as to what work we're gonna have completed on them. Department-wise, the elected department, we still have an opening in the department for linemen, actually, two of them. We've advertised twice now in the newspaper, I think we have three applicants is what was said. Working on pole replacements, service work, disconnects, streetlights, meter readings, substation maintenance, tree trimming, we've been trimming trees, we've got a contractor in trimming trees because we're down two guys in that department now. Water, wastewater, we mentioned the nodes, waterline projects, the work, working on policies and procedures, distribution, fixing hydrants and curb boxes and valves, there was another hydrant that was hit down on South Marietta the other day, so we'll have to fix that one now too. Waterline breaks, we're still at three for the year, which is pretty good, smoke testing letters, I've had a discussion with our new superintendent, we're gonna have the information for the next utility meeting to discuss that and how we wanna proceed. Lift station repairs, I mentioned the e-fall and Space View already. Street department, the asphalt crack fill machine has been ordered, it will be in the week of the 8th, so they're gonna work on that. We also have a trench safety class coming up on, what is that, 3rd? The 3rd of May, so our staff will be for that, trying to make sure that they're up on the latest procedures and safety issues. Started patching potholes, we're ditching culverts, started mowing and got mower prep. Rec center, working on the summer concert series, also had an issue with the outside restrooms, looks like there was some water that was left in the faucets and they kind of froze, so we're trying to work on those. Police department, working in stolen locker room, our officer Yates has been out last couple of weeks with K-9 training, something that will be very helpful with him and our other unit. And good in the city, there's basically no one really out sick, which is good, actually, no, sorry, change that. We've got a guy in the sewer department that is out, he jumped out of a tree stand and almost broke his ankle, tore a bunch of tendons and ligaments and is having surgery on Thursday, so he'll be out for about eight weeks, so we're down one in that department now. And that is pretty much everything again.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Anyone have any questions for the Service Director?
Okay, going back to the sewer issue on e-fall, EPA involved, is there any kind of filings or...
No, we've sent in the information, so they've got information, we've been in contact with them back and forth on it, they asked us to put some lime in the stream, we've also been monitoring the situation, went through and picked up all, as much of the debris as we could, and then obviously fixed the station so that now there's not an issue. What we had found out was that we actually have two overflows out there, there's one at the station and then one that comes from an old lift station on the other side of the tracks, the old railroad tracks where the bike way is, and we didn't realize that that one was overflowing also, so did what we could, found it, got the contractor in.
So, there wasn't nothing sewer line floods elsewhere or...
Just the lift station was down.
So, then was the port...
It's a forced main lift station, so basically grab, everything gravities down to that location and then it forces it up over the hill down to another lift station.
So, is the pump, portable pump actually doing its job then or was it...
It was maintaining.
Maintaining.
Is what we're thinking.
So, like, this happened again, do we go elsewhere and put a second pump or is there any...
Well, the pump that was brought to us was a four-inch pump, we probably needed a six-inch, so live and learn, we'll know next time. But, one of the things that we're going to work on that is, there's two motors in that lift station, both of them were fubarred in the flood, one has been rebuilt, is operational now, we're getting the other one rebuilt and then we're getting a spare, so that we have the ability to go through that. It's been part of the problem is getting enough of an inventory for some of these things and having them here, so that when something goes down, we can fix it in-house and get it taken care of with minimal disruption. But, that pump was out for two weeks.
Who fixes our stuff?
We do, most of it.
Does it go Pittsburgh?
This one was, this one was TEC.
Is that Pittsburgh?
Yeah, they're around Pittsburgh.
Okay. And how long was stuff leaking into the, or being put into the...
We think it was leaking in there about, not even half a day.
Okay. But, we are gonna have a spare pump.
It's what we've been building towards, but that's part of, part of the issue with maintaining everything and making sure we have stuff and move through. I think this has happened twice or three times since I've been here, two years.
So, is the spare pump available for us to purchase then? Okay, so we're just...
It's just money in the budget.
How much is the spare pump?
I have to check, what do you, I mean, at least 50,000 or 60,000?
That's a neighborhood of 60.
I mean, the impeller alone for this thing is $5,000, which is just the shaft that goes into the actual pump to pump it. So, you've got that, you've got a pump, and then you've got the motor that sits on top of it.
So, an extra pump, 60K, that will come out of the sewer department?
But, part of the issue is that we've got 11 lift stations and almost every one of them is different, which is kind of not efficient.
Right.
For lack of a better term. So, one of the things we're looking at is ways that we can have multiple lift stations that have the same motor, same pump, same impeller, same everything, so that we don't have to have 11 or 12 or 22 different pumps...
Right.
Sitting around at 50, 60,000 dollars apiece.
Exactly.
Any other?
Can you just explain to us briefly the necessity of hydrant flushing?
Basically, with the age of our system, what we've got is, there's scale and buildup in the system, so if you look at some of the pipes I've shown before, there's some crud and stuff buildup in there, and what this does when we flush the hydrants is it actually takes all of that out, so it's not into the system. It's kind of one of those necessary evils. Even the newest stuff, once we have plastic pipes, we'll still have to do this, maybe not as much because it won't be as old, but the new tank that was, which was, what, three years ago, was completed, has already got sediment in it that needs to be cleaned out. It's just the nature of water, what's in there and how it flows.
And another question I have then, you say Thursday, the 20th, we might have our first connection? Can you explain that?
Basically, what they're gonna do is, we've got a crossover section that's coming from Dorothy up to Spring Park, so we're gonna tap, we're gonna shut down a section of the line from Dorothy, basically from the new tank, before it gets over to, what is that, Tony Lane, and then they will cut the line, install three new valves in it and then a tee, and then bring the line up, so it will actually come up over the hill to Spring Park. Part of the issue we have with the Spring Park area is pressures, there's not enough pressure or normal flows in there, so part of it is, we've got two-inch water lines that are up there that are corroded and basically necked down to an inch or less. I have pictures that if anyone wants to see how nasty it is.
So, this is the start of our cutting news?
This is the start of the $7 million distribution.
This is the start of the $7 million. Okay, great, that's good news.
It's very good news.
Another question is brought up to me about the ball field mowing. Do we have anything to do with that this year?
No.
Okay, 'cause it was brought up, somebody saying, "We don't know why the city's not doing this."
Well, because it takes, what had happened before is, Junior Sports wants that fields, those fields cut twice a week. That's, I've talked to the contractor that was doing it for him, he has a two-man crew, it takes him four hours to do it, so that would take us eight hours to do it once and then another eight hours again, so you're talking 16 to 20 hours for one guy to go up there and cut the fields for them twice.
Okay.
We do not have the equipment nor the manpower. We've got, what, what do we got, two retired guys that cut grass for us and then whatever summer help we can hopefully get, but same thing, I think we've only got two applicants for summer help too.
Well, I was told one of them was commenting that the city should be mowing this.
Well, the city takes over after ball season and then we cut it until the season stops, which is basically from, what, August, September and October maybe, but we don't cut it twice a week. There's no way we can cut it twice a week.
So, that can be relayed then that we're not cutting ball fields.
Okay, I mean, we're already stepping up, the rec center has already run the concession stand for them, we do the sign-ups for them now through the rec department, through the rec software, and then also Eric is going up, Eric and Rocco are going up and dragging the fields for them too. It gets to a point that, you know, they're being paid to do rec center stuff, not junior sports stuff. I like junior sports, I've always liked it, my kids went through it, I helped coach, I did, you know, whatever I could, but it's one of those things where the city doesn't have enough manpower.
Okay, and then one last question, where are we at with I-70? Any, any updates on the liners?
That was what I said, May 22nd is gonna be the initial, hopefully, one they'll actually install the liner.
May 22nd. Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Okay, any other questions for Jeremy? Okay, we'll move on. Police Chief, that are Ben's?
Good evening, Council. We've been updating several policy procedures in the last few weeks, we've also got a couple of thank-yous by outside agencies who've called for K-9 deployments. Jeremy mentioned our K-19 gates in Odin are finishing up a instructor level training, which should be back next week. Finally, I'd like to recognize Officer Gassdick, whose recent investigation had led to three arrests of drug trafficking, all felonies, two of which were mandatory drug offense felonies, which is a charge of minimum of 10 years terms. That was with the assistance from Bama County Sheriff's Office, US Marshals, Martin Sperry, Bridgeport, Bel Air, and Wheeling PDs, all had to chip in on that because it got big real quick. We seized over one and a quarter pounds of methamphetamines, bulk amounts of fentanyl, cocaine, and heroin taken from the street. So, I was very proud of his work and it was a very great experience working with all those different agencies who are happy to help on short notice.
Thank you, Matt. Yeah, the guy's been doing a really good job on the drugs in town. Does anybody have any questions for Police Chief? Matt? Again, thanks again, Matt. Finance Director Elizabeth Weldon.
Elizabeth, sorry. Goodbye. Excuse me, Anita, that's okay.
We start getting the same name, and then it's the same, it's close.
Sorry.
You got your sister, right?
I was laughing.
It's his birthday, give him a break.
Every other mini-gig gotta mess up some names, that's all we're still.
I have, just have an ordinance tonight to be passed as an emergency, just for operating expenses. The first one, general fund, is we do have an unemployment compensation claim, so I didn't put any money initially in the budget for that, I usually just put it in as we need it. The Parks and Recreation Fund, Eric has gotten like several donations this year, he's over, almost over on his anticipated revenue, so the way some of his things are working for his expenses, like the sign-up for some of the teams, I think Junior Sports for the t-shirts, he gets the money in and then it goes right back out, but it kind of depletes his, the general amount that we gave him for his expenditures, same way with concerts, which is the contractual services, so I did increase those for that reason. The principal and interest was for a loan that, it was an old loan or yearly loan, I forgot to put that in the budget. And then the capital improvement was, he received a grant from the Pittsburgh Pirates and that money is going to the, I think, the junior...
Junior Sports.
Junior Sports, so that's kind of, that's an in and out, so, and then the police fund, I increased Matt's expenses for contractual services due to the fact that they take in money for fingerprinting and then so much goes out per month to pay to the state for those fingerprints to be read, which has kind of depleted some of his contractual service money too that I didn't account for, so those are just some normal expenses. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Matt. Does anybody have any questions? Beth?
I defer to Dawn, then I'll go.
What's that?
You can go first.
Oh, thanks. On the ordinance tonight then, those funds, are you like transferring money?
No, it's increasing, they, it's increasing their expenditures, their appropriations from the original...
So, it's not like we're, where's it coming from?
Well, a lot of Eric's are coming from donations, but there's, there's like a guideline I can follow that says, there's like a variance that I'm allowed to increase each fund by so much money, there's a dollar amount, which these amounts are covered under that, so...
Okay, so there's no transferring funds or moving funds or...
No, it's adding, it's additional, and Eric's like is due because his, his revenue's way up from his donations, so...
But, to his question about, so where is it coming from?
It's just there, I mean, there's a dollar amount, there's a fund dollar amount there, it's, it's in the cash, it's, it's available.
In, in his department?
Yes, in his fund.
So, you're just switching it from this line item to this line item?
No, I'm increasing it. I'm allowed to increase, there's a variance level that says, okay, if the water department needs this much money, then there's a comparison and a budgeted report, and then there's a variance, but I don't appropriate all the money that's available every year. I don't do that, there's extra money sitting there in case we need it, and it's in that variance, and it'll say, hey, you know, the police fund has maybe 70 or 80,000 dollars, but if needed, I can increase it by that dollar amount, so that's how that rule works.
And that's the same as like the general fund, all of them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
And then the interest?
That's for a loan, that's just, it's, that's a loan that was already in the, for the rec department, it's just a loan that we pay every year, but I actually forgot to put that in the budget, so that's why I have to...
So, then interest goes with that loan?
Mm-hmm, the principal and the interest.
And is that gonna be then a one-time payment on that loan and then we're done for the year on that?
Yes.
And there's a necessity for an emergency on this?
Yes, yes.
And if we would not pass it in emergency?
Well, the unemployment compensation, there's no money there, we have a bill due there, the principal, I've already paid the loan, so we do need to repay that back to another line item, so... And the other one, the other two, this contractual services and supplies and materials are, you know, things he's gonna need because the way his donations work is depleting some of his regular money for his normal expenses. And the capital improvement was just a flat-out donation that we weren't expecting.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Matt.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll move on to planning and zoning, Mr. Murphy?
Oh, thank you, Jim. That ad was published, I had the information from Council outlawing me to go to head, go ahead, and that ad for the rezoning was in the April 7 newspaper, I do have a copy of it if you had any interest in looking at it, certainly could. Zayo, they're getting closer to being finished, pulled all of their conduit through, my understanding in speaking with them is that they should finish up this week, they're waiting on some handholds, that's just another term for, I'll say, manholes, that they're, they had them in a location in Claysville, they weren't aware of it, where they went to get the ones, finished the job, different location, so they couldn't pick them up and put them in last week, so the goal, my understanding, is to get it done in this week and hopefully finalized. My plan is to kind of walk their route tomorrow, just snap a bunch of photos where they did some open cuts in some alleys and sidewalks and things like that, which was anticipated, that I can reach out to their contractor, I already had it last week, just to make sure that they get everything taken care of and cleaned up and finalized. My understanding last week is that there was, they had set up on some private property without asking permission, and that's a civil matter, but I think Jeremy reached out and handled that. I did contact Carl Crawford, who's the foreman for Zayo, and he had a phone call from the property owner, had called back, couldn't leave a message, I suggested he go down and knock on the door and just talk to them about it. And just a reminder to the public and everyone about getting permits, there's been a couple of close calls already like there is in the spring, just today I was contacted by a contractor, he stopped anyone that started a job today, he was very friendly, but when we looked a little bit further into it, there was one of our sanitary mains right there, they hadn't even called in for a locate, which obviously isn't good practice, I'd asked them about that, I'm working with the sanitary department now to see how the project, maybe could still go ahead but change location and not affect the sanitary lines, so just a reminder to the public, we don't want... So just a reminder to the public, we don't wanna see any problems that arise for our guys in our system, so, that's it.
Anybody have any questions for Tom?
Was that the project that they're digging now, where they was gonna put like a spare conduit in, that we would be able to?
Yes.
Did they do that?
They did do that, and some of the manholes that they have to finalize are ours. We were requiring a concrete slash fiberglass manhole, and they're not traditional manhole, they're not circular, they're rectangular, they're maybe three by foot and a half. And those were the ones that we, they requested, can we do plastic? We said, "No, we'd like you to stick to the plan," and they were agreeable to that. And they were gonna complete everything, so that's what delayed a little bit, never getting those proper manholes.
Any other questions for Tom?
And if anybody has questions on the May 15 hearing, you can always give me the call.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Okay, we'll move on to council committees. Finance, Dawn, do you have anything to report this evening?
Yeah, we did not have our finance meeting tonight, but our next meeting will be at the May 15 council meeting. And I don't know, Jim, if we could have that one at six o'clock also, to give us a little additional time?
Yeah, we can change it, we just need to notify the public and?
I would like to have that one start at six o'clock also.
Okay, let's see, you want that at six, two? I'd like that to where, get that to Roberta, too. Okay, any other questions? Okay, move on to utilities. Terry, do you have anything to report on utilities?
We had our meeting tonight, in place of the finance meeting, and just further discussion of water rates and things like that. And our next regular meeting will be May 1st. And I think we better go ahead and make that one six o'clock as well.
Okay.
Go ahead and put that in there. We still have a lot to discuss, I think, there.
Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay, Mike's not here this evening for police, I don't, is there anything else? Won't be a police committee meeting tonight, I assume. Okay, JC's not here, so we'll move on to building and grounds. Beth O'Bridge.
Our next meeting will be on April 25th and noon.
Okay, we'll move on to planning commission, Kristy?
I have nothing to add to Tom's report.
Okay. Thank you. Fire district, Ms. Jordan?
Yes, the men and women from the department have been going door-to-door to give information about the levy and answer any questions that people may have. And the next meeting is April 26th at 8:15 a.m. at the firehouse.
That levy will be on the ballot this May, in the primary, I would say.
Yes.
Recreation, do you have anything on recreation, Kristy?
I do, the community garden has ten spots still available. The cost is thirty dollars for the year. Residents can contact the rec department for more information. The election will be held in the rec center on May the 2nd, so there will not be anything else available because the polls will be open. Junior sports season starts tomorrow, and the rec center will be, once again, running the concession stand for the season. And there is going to be an adult pickleball tournament on April 28th and 29th. The cost is forty dollars per team, and people can contact the rec department for more information. The next meeting is this Thursday, April 20th at 4:30 p.m. at the rec center.
Okay, thank you, Kristy. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a question. For the garden, can you do flowers, or is it strictly vegetable?
I don't think there's any restrictions.
You don't think there's restrictions?
Yeah, no.
I think that the rules that were put in place was?
You can grow.
Legal. Well, those are flowers, too. Legal flower, legal plants are allowed.
I've seen sunflowers down there, so. Yeah, I think, I think I have seen. Yeah, I've definitely seen big sunflowers down there, so.
Sunflower seed.
Right. So I'm not, so, can't exactly say if that was inserted, but.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions on the rec? Okay, move on to park district, Ms. Jordan?
No report, the park is now on two meetings per month, and the next meeting is April 24th at 4:30 at the pavilion. They were at a pavilion at the park.
What time did you say that was?
4:30.
4:30, okay. Okay, that concludes the council committees. We'll now move on to ordinances and resolutions with our law director, and in all fairness, Elizabeth, would you like to have your name changed to a Matt?
Sure, you know, keep me him.
Okay, Elizabeth is now our law director still. So move on to first reading on ordinance 202312.
Okay, one piece of legislation, obviously 202312, that's the ordinance to make supplemental appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio, for the period of January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023, and declaring an emergency. I think the finance director has gone over the various items in that ordinance.
Okay, thank you. Jake, will you read the first reading on that, 202312?
Ordinance number 202312, an ordinance to make supplemental appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio, for the period of January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that is the first reading. Finance director has stated that she would like to have it passed as an emergency. Does anybody wish to take any further action?
I move that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Need a second? Okay, we'll take a vote on whether or not to consider this emergency legislation.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
O'Bridge?
Yes.
Fincenza?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
If 202312 is considered emergency legislation, so we will have a final reading.
Ordinance number 202312, an ordinance to make supplemental appropriations for the normal expenses and other expenditures of the city of St. Clairsville, state of Ohio, for the period of January 1st, 2023, through December 31st, 2023, and declaring an emergency.
Okay, that is the final reading. Does anybody wish to make a motion to vote on the motion itself? Second? Okay, take a roll call vote on passing the resolution itself.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
O'Bridge?
Yes.
Fincenza?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
It is an ordinance, not a resolution.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, that is passed, so that will be?
Motion carried. All good.
Take a roll call.
We're good.
We're good.
We're all good.
All right, so we got nothing else on legislation? Okay, so that is emergency, it is enforced, and that takes care of the legislature. Does anyone else have anything they wish to bring up before we adjourn? Okay, hearing nothing, I'd like to have a motion to adjourn, please. Second? Meeting is adjourned.